Welcome to Clark County Primary 2012, a source for getting to know those running for office. Your government, your candidates, your vote. Today, the candidates present their views on the issues surrounding their campaigns, right here on COUV.com.
And hello, I'm Victoria Taft. This is COUV.com's special edition of Clark County Primary 2012. Thank you so much for tuning in on this live webcast. And I want you to know a couple of things. First of all, this webcast will be available for you to view all the time. It's going to be at the COUV.com website for your perusal. Secondly, the reason we're doing this is for full transparency, so that you have an opportunity to get to know the people who are running for office. You know, sometimes it's very difficult to get details on people running for office in your own neighborhood, your own district. This is an opportunity for you to be able to do that. I'm Victoria Taft, as I mentioned, and you might remember my voice. It might sound familiar to you. I do a talk show on AM 860 KPM from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. every weekday morning and afternoon. And so I invite you to watch that and listen to that and watch this live cast as well. But normally, I'm very privileged to be here to talk with these local officials, the people who want to gain your trust, to get your vote. And so we do so today with a look at the Clark County Commissioners' race. And on my left, your right, is Mark Bolt, who's here today. David Medor is running for office as well. And so we're going to start out with a few questions, but first, we will do one thing. And we'll ask each of these individuals what qualifies them to be in office and what their main goal will be for the Clark County Commission in the upcoming session. Let's start with Mark Bolt. You are an incumbent, and welcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you, David. What qualifies me, I think, is my life. I grew up on the farm, grew up here in Clark County, ran a berry farm most of my life, dairy farm. I drove a construction truck for many years, so I've been in the construction business. And then in 1994, I ran for state representative, and I was a state representative for the 17th District for 10 years. On that, I served on appropriations, all the budget committees, law and justice, children, family services, social. So that gave me a good inkling of what happens in the state now, so worked with the federal government to some degree. Also, then in 2004, I ran for county commissioner. I've been a county commissioner for eight years. We've seen the ups and the downs on both sides, done growth plans to business, to laying off over 200 people, so I've seen the good and the bad, the easy and the hard things of county government. What probably is, I think, the most concerning for this next four years is, first of all, we are entering again into another comprehensive growth plan. That happens about every seven years. And so one of the major things a county commissioner has to do in Washington is our growth plan. And we will, in fact, we started entering in that today about the rural growth plan that we are doing. So that's really the...
That's your goal, huh?
That's the goal.
That's pretty much it.
Is to get through that. And then along with that, you know, is the environmental regulations that are coming down that I've worked on. So just to try and get through our stormwater rules, things like that is the number one.
All right. So, very good. Mark Bolt, thank you very much. And David Medor, what qualifies you to be a Clark County Commissioner? And also, what is your main thrust, your main goal, should you win office?
Actually, those are tied together. I believe that if there ever was a time when leaders from private industry ought to step forward and assist government, really redefine how government does government, this is that time. We are here prospering, thriving, growing. We're healthy, we're hiring people, and we've been enjoying competition. It's tuned us up over the years. It's made us efficient. It's made us resourceful, innovative. We've grown 20% this year, 20% the previous year, and that's something that really testifies to the kind of principles that when you put them in play, they are universal, and the same kind of prosperity, the same kind of health that is here on this campus, I'd love to see that expand to the county. So the motivation to see our county prosper is really what's moved me to step into this role and say, here, we can do much more, smarter choices, more efficiency. And that's the desires, that's the goal, really. People are out of work. Jobs are in short supply. We still have businesses that are failing. We still have people that are losing their homes. So the economic environment isn't healthy. Our county needs help. In order to do that, we need leadership. We need courageous leadership that really looks at how do we do government? And how do we do it smarter? How do we avoid debt? How do we make smarter choices? That's something that, it takes more than just desire. It takes years of experience to be able to develop good judgment. And over the last 30-some years, I've been through the learning curve, and that is something that, and what is an expert? An expert is somebody who made a lot of mistakes. So it's better to make the mistakes on your dime rather than on the community's dime. So this is something that is, I love to see our community prosper as well as we are.
All right. Now, so Mark Bolt, you brought up the fact that the Clark County Commission has begun to undertake the growth plan for the next few years. On a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being, it is very important to you, where do private property rights lie in your worldview?
Oh, private property rights are very important.
Are they a 1, a 5, a 10? What are we looking at?
I would say a 10. And, but, the question is, is sometimes your rights and my rights don't align with it. But as most of, you know, for the majority of the time, I think we have respected property rights. We, one thing about the county, though, is that a county is created by the state and the federal government. We implement what the state gives us. So many times, people say, you're against my property rights, when we are implementing a state law. We have really nothing that, but that's why we work with the state a lot, is to say, hey, give us that flexibility. Keep off their backs.
1 to 10. Thank you. 1 to 10, David Medor, 10 being the most important thing, what, where do private property rights collide with that little scale I just gave you?
Absolutely a 10. Private property rights are really the foundation for our American form of government. Our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence, our founding documents, we're really there to protect private property rights. It's not that we want to, that government just says, well, we're going to take your private property rights for no reason. It's always under some greater good, under the guise of some greater good, that's where we lose our rights. And people in our community, people across the state, have lost a great deal of the private property rights. Some of that is, most of that is due to the state, with the Department of Ecology, with the stormwater regulations that have basically made it impossible to develop your property, which decreases your value. If you can't sell it, they've taken away the value of your property.
It's a takings. Mark Bolt, you mentioned the fact that you're answerable to the state and to federal governments, but you are elected locally. To what extent are you beholden to the people who hired you?
Well, it's, we're right in the middle. We're many times between the people and the state government. As David said, we're right in now in three courts because of our stormwater rules. We implemented rules that were very favorable to the citizens of the county. However, right now, we're under federal court and state court. And we're spending a lot of money fighting them rules, fighting the state and federal courts to give the county citizens what they deserve.
And what do they deserve?
They deserve really rules that have an outcome, and the less paperwork is possible. Unlike the state government, Department of Ecology, they really don't care about the outcome, but they want a heck of a lot of paperwork.
Well, it seems to me that maybe the U.S. Supreme Court decision on Sackett would have put the end to that, and you might want to bring it up with the Department of Ecology in all of those lawsuits, because you can't just have an ongoing, never-ending parade of environmental overlays, et cetera, and no answers from the Department of Ecology, because under Sackett, you have to tell people where they stand in the process.
And that is precisely what we're in federal court for, telling Department of Ecology that they're overstepping the Federal Clean Act. So far, Department of Ecology has said, no, we can do what we want. We haven't had really any help from the state legislature to really back us upon that. Of course, we don't have a Republican governor. But I hope that, you know, some changes in the next election, when we get a new Department of Ecology, then that person will say, we're going to implement federal rules and no more.
David Medor, I asked Mr. Bolt about how answerable people have to be on county commission to the people who hired them. How would you answer that question?
Well, we are servants. We serve the community. Somebody said today, you're governing people, and I'm thinking, no, we don't govern people. We govern the resources for people. People need to be able to, they are the customers. They need to buy into whatever we, whatever needs to, is being considered. And that's something where, it's really motivated me to jump in and make a difference, because I feel like the people in this county haven't had a vote on the biggest project in our history. That was something that hopefully will happen this year, but it was promised in the last county commissioner election, 2010. Mark, as chairman of C-TRAN during that time, that was an opportunity to follow through on that and to give a vote to the people in Clark County, and it didn't happen. And hopefully, it will this year.
Do you make a promise that people will be able to vote on light rail, which is what I hear David Medor actually asking?
Yes, and this November, we will have a vote on light rail.
No, I mean a county-wide vote. I mean a county-wide, I mean a county-wide vote.
A C-TRAN district-wide vote?
No, I'm talking Clark County.
County-wide?
You're a Clark County Commissioner, so...
No, we cannot, under state law, have a county-wide vote. However, we do sit on C-TRAN, and I promise, the C-TRAN for a district-wide vote for C-TRAN, we will get a vote, and that's what's going to happen.
So yeah, let me ask you this, because, I mean, you're invested in all the machinations of government. Can you have a C-TRAN district vote, and then another district vote that is separate and distinct from C-TRAN, and then another district vote, and then another district vote, and collect those things and have a vote? I hate to sound ignorant about that, but I mean, could that be done, if you're a Clark County Commissioner, I mean?
You mean a sub-district vote?
Sure.
We can have a, we could have a sub-district vote within C-TRAN. C-TRAN has to do that. We have chosen not to do that. We have chosen to have a district-wide vote for C-TRAN.
I'm talking about a county-wide vote, but I mean, I think that's what the people want.
I know that's what the people want.
And why don't you give that to them?
The only way we could do that is that if we expanded C-TRAN's boundaries to the full county, then C-TRAN has authority to have the vote.
Yeah, but I think you're, I think what I'm hearing here is that you're only talking about with respect to your position on C-TRAN.
C-TRAN.
I'm talking to you about your position on the Clark County Commission. And as a Clark County Commissioner, couldn't you bring pressure to bear?
We do not have authority. If the state would give us the authority to have a vote, which we have asked the state to do that, that would be fine. But so far, the state has not chosen to give us authority for the county commissioners to have a vote.
Okay.
We can do that at C-TRAN.
Now, David Medor, are you in favor, I think I know the answer to this question, but are you in favor of a toll on Columbia River Crossing? Are you in favor of the project? Are you in favor of a toll? Are you in favor of light rail?
Well, the reason that we don't have tolls, and we haven't had tolls all these years, is back when this was first decided, the form of revenue, the tax source, was gas taxes. And we do pay one of the highest gas taxes in the nation. That has been building our roads all these times, all these years. The project that is being considered here, it's really not a bridge project. I consider that to be the cheese in the mousetrap. Really, the mousetrap is really the light rail tolling project. And those tolls are really not to pay for a bridge. Those tolls are to pay for light rail, which is not appropriate. It's the wrong focus for us. That's why I believe that we should have some means to poll our citizens so they can speak and say whether or not they want such to pay for this $10 billion project. Just to be specific, in the last county commissioner election, when Steve Stewart was up for election, he made the motion, it passed C-TRAN, and the decision was made during that election. That was the meeting that was on September 13th and September 14th of 2010, that promised the voters to, that there would be a vote on light rail then. And that should have happened, that it's, we had plenty of time, had over a year to be able to prepare that. When it comes to the C-TRAN district versus the county-wide district, C-TRAN started out as a county-wide district, and it was only back in, when was that, 2000, a number of years ago, when Tim Levitt, Jeannie Stewart, and a few others decided that they, after a funding measure failed at the county level to raise taxes for C-TRAN, they cut out those voters that didn't support it. They kept the stores in, which is the high-density areas, and they cut out everybody else. And then it passed after that. Really, it's, those voters throughout the county are paying that extra sales tax, because they don't have a choice. They have to shop in those stores.
You're listening to a live webcast on COUV.com. We're taking a look at some of the people running for office, and these webcasts will be available for your perusal at any time leading up to the August 7th primary. I'm Victoria Taft, and I'm your moderator tonight, and seated next to me, David Medor, and also Mark Bolt. They're both running for Clark County Commission. This is a very important race. I think you can tell that some of the issues here are things that hit home. And Mark, to that end, you talk about the fact that you're doing the growth plan right now for Clark County. Does the growth plan for Clark County include light rail?
Our growth plan includes transportation, but our growth plan does not include specific transportation projects. So the county's growth plan doesn't. It doesn't, it only has county roads.
And so how long does this project into the future?
It's, what the county growth plan does is, we have to provide infrastructure and really lands for jobs and housing for the next 20 years.
Do you foresee a time in your growth planning that people will be placed on limited-sized lots and that sort of thing? I imagine it's probably already starting to happen in Clark County, but is maybe replicating that which is already occurring in Multnomah County?
Actually, what we're trying to do is decrease the density. Density for smaller lots, as you said. The state is really on us all the time about minimum, minimum-sized lots. They would like 4,000 or 5,000 square foot lots. Really, what the buyer now is looking for a 10,000 square foot lot. Also, with the buyers elderly, I'd say like us, like me, okay? Pick anything. So anyway...
He called me elderly. Just kidding.
Anyway...
I won't hold it against you.
They want a larger one-story room, so, one-story house. So you need a bigger lot. And really, density increases crime, and density increases the services. So we're trying to expand that. That does, though, hurt us in a way, I guess you would say, the other side, is that we have to expand the urban growth boundary out. As you know, with metro, they don't like changing the urban growth boundary at all.
No, they don't.
We fight that, but I think in the next plan, we're, in our last plan, we changed the boundary, and our next one, we will change the boundary again.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for taking that sort of question. And to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done in the past in Clark County, and what we need to do to look forward in Clark County. I'm going to turn to David Medor. One of the things that struck me as doing a program, and of course, I'm based in Portland, but I've been struck by what happened to Chuck's Produce. Are you familiar with that story?
Yes, yes.
So how does a county commissioner bring pressure to bear to allow a company to come in and hire people in a particular area? I mean, that was in Salmon Creek, but I just kind of wonder, what is it that a county commissioner can do to help a company grow?
Well, the first thing a business considers is, what is the cost to be able to move into an area, be able to set up business, whether or not it's going to be a practical choice or not? The barriers that have been erected by the county have turned away businesses over the years. I was one of those businesses, and the process hasn't changed very much, when I considered moving up here from California. Chuck's Produce, what was it, $930 million, or, yeah, $930,000, wasn't that about what we, or $970,000 is what the county was asking Chuck's Produce to pay in order to occupy a empty building? That wasn't, that wasn't right. It would be...
For which traffic impact studies had already been done.
Yeah.
And that was for the traffic impact study.
Does that make sense? When the number-one need for our county is for businesses to be invited, welcomed, there's two ways to fund revenue, fund taxes, and county government needs taxes. You can say, well, I'm going to require it upfront, it's going to cost you, or you can welcome them in, let them start their business, hire all those people, and then you have a monthly steady income that makes things work. Everybody wins. And that deterrent should be removed, and we've made some progress on that, but still, it's a little progress, and it needs to be taken away completely.
Now, the environmentalists have taken him to court for an organic food store. Imagine that. So, you know, I just, Mark Bolt, can you give me like a 20-second answer on how that happened? I mean, in terms of what you've done to help Chuck's Produce?
Chuck's Produce come in, first of all, to the county. They said, we want to do this store in this zone. So what our formula does, says is, if you do this size store in this size zone, it has this many cars. That's how they come up with the 900,000. We went to Chuck's Produce then, they come, then, then they come in, of course. We said, no, that's not the size store that we, that we thought you were talking about. They said how they dealt business. Chuck's Produce is, we've cut that down a lot of money. In fact, now with the fee holiday, there's no money at all.
Fee holiday, just for Chuck's Produce or for everyone?
No, for everyone. If you have 10 jobs or more, anywhere, you don't pay anything. No fees or no billing permits.
Let me ask you one more thing before we, I turn to David Medor for just a moment on this live webcast, and it has to do with something that's making the rounds a lot on the conservative webpages. And I ask you the question about the emergency ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, that was passed in 2005, in which it was left wide open, the fact that if anything had happened, where someone would have the intent to want to harm someone else, for instance, who knows? But if you invoked an emergency ordinance, they could not have their guns, for instance. Would you please clarify that?
Yeah, and I believe 2005, we essentially codified some state law. There was some, under emergency ordinances, if the chairman wanted to, they could, they could go against people possessing arms and selling them. That's come to our attention. The prosecuting attorney now is working on repealing that section of the ordinance, and very soon, I would think by July, we will get rid of it.
Okay, so you do concede that that was something that would have taken people's guns away from them?
Oh, yeah. All three commissioners own guns, so we're not going to do that. Yes.
Interesting. David, did you have any insight on that, or something that you would like to talk about?
Sure. I'm glad it's being repealed, but it's been in place all these years. It is good that we're repealing it. The right for people to defend themselves is really foundational to our liberties. And if the situation may arise, there's some catastrophe or something, that's the time when people do need to defend themselves.
Yeah, absolutely. From looters and that sort of thing, yeah. Absolutely. Let me ask you this. We talk a little bit about the CRC, we've talked a number of things about growth and planning and that sort of thing. With respect to Columbia River Crossing, do you, do you want tolls? Do you not want tolls? Do you want an increase in taxes? I mean, where do you stand on that project first? And what about tolling and charging Clark County residents more for a project that it's becoming even more evident that they don't want?
Well, you know, it's a federal road, and so as I...
I mean, do you want it or do you not want it? The Columbia River Crossing, is that what you stand, do you want it or not want it?
I think that I would like to have the bridge itself.
What about light rail?
Light rail, no.
What about tax, or tolls?
Tolls, no. It's a federal highway. I voted no in Regional Transportation Committee against tolls, and when the legislature had the tolling legislation in Olympia, I wrote comments against it.
In this, in this upcoming tax levy that you're asking people to, what is it, a half a cent tax or what have you, increase in the sales tax? That money will go toward C-TRAN, correct?
I guess, yeah, for light rail and bus rapid transit.
Okay, that's what it's going to go for. So instead of bus rapid transit, which I think was how it was identified and advertised, that that money would go toward, it actually will go in a pot of money toward light rail then?
It goes to the operation of light rail.
Okay.
Yeah, and the capital construction of bus rapid transit.
David, what do you think about that?
Well, first of all, the county commissioners, all three of them sit on C-TRAN board. And, Mark, as the chairman of C-TRAN, when that came before C-TRAN, rather than oppose that project, rather than to say, wait, we don't want light rail, we don't want tolls, C-TRAN, and you as the chair, approved that and sent that on to the feds in order to approve the record of decision. That was a huge, huge harm to us, because that vote that was promised in 2010, that we would be able to vote on that, didn't happen. And that got approved, that got rubber stamped, and now we're in a pickle, because the record of decision has already been made. Now we need to back up and show how that was really in violation, how that was a process that failed the citizens. So absolutely, that is a project that could only go forward if the local citizens and the local representatives, who are hopefully representing those citizens, would endorse it. I watched the Congress debate this, talking about Vancouver, Washington, Clark County, Washington, and they were all saying, oh, well, the local people support it. Why? Why would they say that? It's because as county commissioners and as city council members, they approved it without any reservation.
Gentlemen, we're almost out of time. I apologize. You can actually put that in your closing remarks, since I see you wanting to talk, Mark Bolt, and I totally understand. And you have two minutes to wrap up and give your closing statement in this truncated version of this live webcast, and it's truncated because I know you have a huge affair tonight to go to through the legal women voters, and we want to honor that. So, Mark Bolt, why don't you take it away and issue your closing remarks?
Thank you. It is, well, thank you, Victoria. There's a lot to cover. We didn't cover health, we didn't cover social services, really a majority of the things I do on the county commissioners. But we did spend a lot of time on the CRC. Actually, David is wrong. And when we did pass it to the federal government, we said, we will only do this unless there is a positive vote. I've said that to Maria Cantwell, to Patty Murray, to Jamie Herrera, to Brian Baird. They all know that we will only fund light rail unless there is a positive vote. So with that, if they're talking that everyone likes light rail in Vancouver, well, they're not listening to me, they're listening to other people. It's been an enjoyable time. I think we have a lot of challenges in front of us, primarily stormwater, environmental regulations, and really, the cuts to the federal government. The federal government doesn't have a balanced budget. Someday, they will have to have a balanced budget.
Have to have a budget.
Them cuts will come down on the county, and so we have to get ready for that. So what's in our social services, things like that. But we're out of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, David. I think we have about a minute for you to wrap up.
Sure, sure. First of all, it really doesn't matter very much what we say verbally. We have to be able to put it in writing. And the approval for that CRC project went on without condition to, the record of decision was granted, and the only question is, according to Tim Levitt, how we're going to fund the operation and maintenance of light rail? It's not whether or not we do or not. So the, that message never came through. That message is, it's going forward, it's going to steamroll over citizens, whether we like it or not, and that's where we have to withdraw all support for that project. The first thing that we ought to do as representatives of the people is to publicly withdraw all support from that boondoggle project. It is not an appropriate use of our, of our taxes. What we, to set that aside, that is a major issue. The more immediate problem that we face is the difficulty that we have financially, the lack of jobs, the hardship that we have when it comes to businesses. This is not the time to create a brand-new bus rapid transit project. This is not a time to continue to grow the size and cost of C-TRAN or other government agencies. We still have the expenditures by the county increasing this year by $70 million. This is not the time to do that. What we need to be able to do is to make government more efficient. And the way we can do that is we can welcome competition to the government services. I have two definitions. One's valid, one's not. The one sounds good, but it's not valid. And that is that the role of the county government is to provide essential services. Sounds good, but it's not true. A more accurate definition is, the role of county government is to ensure that county services get provided. And they can be done by the county with public employees and with the unions that organize, or they can be, you can open that up to competition, where the existing departments can compete along with private industry, and that will bring in the most essential motivation to tune things up with efficiency. I believe we can cut the cost of services by one-third, reduce taxes, and improve our customer service. It will adjust in... It will adjust invite competition. It would be a very good thing. We can go from, from a culture of no to a culture of yes, so that we can accommodate new growth in business and health and new jobs.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mark Bolt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, David Medor, providing these facilities as well. And COUV.com is where you can find the webcast of this, and of course, you're listening right now to the live webcast. And I want to say thank you very much, because this election has probably never been so important. And your ballots will be dropping any day now, and you'll start seeing the collection boxes throughout 35 locations throughout Clark County, and you'll want to exercise your franchise and choose well. That's definitely what you have to do. Now, these folks have chosen to be here today, others, everyone was invited, and these gentlemen showed up today. I think maybe that should take some consideration by you when you fill out your ballot and put it in the mailbox or the drop box. Keep watching this space, as they say, because we'll be talking to other people who are running for, for instance, Clark County Public Utilities, as well as other law office holders. And on behalf of COUV.com, I want to thank you very much, and I want you to encourage, I want to encourage you, rather, to tune into my program on AM 860 K-PAM from 11 to 3. We appreciate that very much, as well as these gentlemen for showing up today and getting into the arena. It's not easy to do this. And until the next time, choose well.
This has been a Clark County Primary 2012 Election Update. Your government, your candidates, your vote. A production of COUV.com.